...the general public, so thank you for being here. As always, we're excited to bring this together as one large comprehensive forum to get the information out there and try to be a resource. Get the word out to other people here that can't make it because there will be coverage for this, obviously, on the People's Press website and in the paper. And then, of course, Careful is going to be broadcasting the audio as well. With that, I think we're going to introduce Brad Meyer with the Chamber of Commerce. Let's give him a warm in.
Thanks, everybody, for attending today's candidate forum. It's great to have you here. Of course, this is the first of four this month, and so we're pleased to partner again with the Rotary Clubs and People's Press on this event. I also want to always give a special thanks to Todd Hale for helping coordinate everything. He's always ahead of the game on getting this put together, so thank you, Todd. The way this will work today is you all have pens and notepens at your table. Our moderator will kick things off with some questions, but you have the opportunity to ask your own, so we ask you to write them down and just kind of hold it up. If you've got it ready, we'll collect them and we'll get to as many of those as we can throughout the forum. With that, we'll invite the candidates to come up to your spot here on stage, and I'm going to turn it over to our moderator today, Mr. Jeffrey Jackson with the Oatana People's Press. Jeffrey?
You may notice that we have -- that's loud. You may notice that we have five candidates who will be here this morning. There are seven actual candidates on the ballot for -- in November, but two of the candidates, Eric Schuster and Dale Fairbanks, were unable to be here today, and they did call and let us know that they could not be here with us today. So there are just the five candidates who are with us at this time. Gentlemen, welcome. You are -- we are going to ask you to share the microphones that are in front of you. Mr. Seabring, we know you have a nice booming voice, which is good because you're going to have to really speak up in that microphone that you have. If for some reason they can't hear you at the back, we'll get one of the other microphones to you. Gentlemen, here are the rules, the format for this candidate forum. No question has been provided to the candidates in advance. Candidates, you will be given two minutes at the beginning of this forum to have some opening comments to the public. Then the candidates will alternate response to each question that I ask, and then you will be allowed for the answers one minute for each question. The timer is Sharon West, who is sitting at this table. She will hold up a yellow card, like that, when you have 30 seconds left. She will hold up a red card indicating stop when your time is up, and if you do go over, I will cut you off. So just be prepared. Then, at the end of the forum, we will have time for closing statements, and you will be allowed two minutes for your closing statement. So to begin with, with the opening question, we will have, I believe, we have David Anderson, Ronald Van Norden, Keenan Wall, known as KJ Wall, then Bill Wall and Mark Seabring. Bill Wall and Mark Seabring are both running for the two-year term. The other three candidates, as well as the two who are not with us today, are running for four-year terms. Gentlemen, are you ready? All right, Mr. Anderson, we will begin with you and for your two-minute opening statement.
Hello? Everyone here okay? Thank you and welcome for having this. Thanks to the People's Press, the Rotary Club, both in noon and the morning Rotary Club, as well as the Chamber. I know a lot of you in this room. I was a member of Rotary for quite a number of years, so I know most of you. For those who don't know me, I'm Dave Anderson. I am a current school board member and certainly am interested in continuing to serve and have taken the opportunity to serve on the school board. If I look at the next year, we have quite a few different things we need to accomplish within the schools. One, the schools, certainly increasing student achievement is a critical part of the schools, and that's why we're on the school board. Two, we're going to have to hire a new superintendent. We have an interim superintendent right now, so we're going to have to do something there. Three, we're going to have, we have $1.2 million budgeted to cut for this next fiscal year. That's certainly going to be a challenge, so we're going to have to spend some time there. Fourth, we really need to work to build a stronger relationship with the community. We, over the last couple of years, have kind of weaned a little bit in that area. We need to increase our trust and relationship with the community. And then, we're going to have to start preparing for a levy vote. We aren't going to do a levy vote this year, but our current levy is set to expire in a couple of years, so we're going to have to be prepared to start the groundwork to make that happen. So if I can back up a little bit and talk a little bit more about increasing student achievement, you know, we're doing things like STEM and options and Montessori and ninth-grade accounting. We have a bunch of things we're doing, and we're going to need to continue to find more creative ways to address the needs of our students, more creative, different ways to teach our students. We have our, an achievement gap between our minority and non-minority schools. We're going to have to work hard to increase and to fix that. Obviously, sitting in the superintendent is going to be a pretty critical element.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Mr. Van Norden.
Thank you. I'm just going to introduce myself and a little bit about me because I don't think most of you do know me very well. So I'm running for the four-year position, as was mentioned, and I'm a retired farm business management instructor with Riverland Community College. And I've had experience in teaching agriculture at three educational levels, high school, post-secondary, and adult, three of the four educational levels. As a farm business management instructor, I taught farmers accounting, record-keeping, record analysis, cash flow budgeting, long-range planning, and a whole host of other topics related to managing a farm. Most of my instruction was delivered on-site, which means that I, the farmers that I worked with applied the economic principles taught to their own personal farming operation. During that time, there always seemed to be farmers who would have some financial crisis or some financial issues that they had to deal with, and I was very involved with helping farm families figure out how to solve the financial problems that they might have. And since agriculture is a very cyclical business, I think you'll discover, I discovered anyway, that most of the families that I worked with at some point in time had some problem, some economic problem that had to be resolved. My wife Lynn and I have four children who have very successful careers. Chris, my oldest daughter, is in the ministry. My son Paul is a swine consultant. My son Andrew works with soybean genetics, and my daughter Kara is a biology educator. One of the reasons that I'm running for the school board is because I feel the rural community needs to be represented on the school board. I've lived in rural areas all my life and worked with farm families most of my professional career. My family's been involved in the 4H and the FFA program for rural youth, and these connections and others help me feel that I insist on representing.
Thank you, sir. Mr. KJ Wall.
All right, hi. My name's KJ Wall or Keenan Wall. November, you have to remember the Keenan part of it, I guess. And I'm currently serving on the board and have the role of treasurer in addition to the board duties. And, you know, I've been married to my wife Katie for 16, going on 17 years, and we have two kids. Both of them are in the school system now. My son Keenan, he's eight, and he's a third grader at Washington, and my daughter Lily, just turned, she's five, and she's in kindergarten. And those, that's really the reason that I'm most interested in the school board position. My children are part of the school district. I work for a company that values education and looks to Oatana graduates for future employers. So that's really the motivation for me participating in the board. Currently, I'm a senior legal counsel at Federated Insurance, and I've been in that position since 2008, so I'm going on my fifth year there. And it's really been surprising to me how much of the work that I do at Federated transfers to the school board. You know, we've got problems, we have to look into and identify ways to solve those problems, and then we have to get everybody on the same page and move forward to implement the solutions. That's what I do at work. That's what I ended up doing on the school board. So those skills, I guess, problem-solving, analysis, and communication have really carried over well from work to the school board. You know, everybody's got problems, you just put a different label on it. It's what I'm finding out. And so I think those skills, along with the tenure on my board so far, have made me qualified for the position, and, you know, I look forward to answering some of the questions about the issues, but as maybe --
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Bill Wall.
Before my time starts, we're, same name, not related. Just to let you know. Now you can start.
What is that? What are you trying to say there?
We have a, we have a great school system today, and we need to make sure we continue to invest those resources into it to keep it not just a good school system, but an outstanding school system. We have been going through some difficult times lately with some questions raised about the leadership of the system and some financial challenges that will require difficult choices. I know the current school board has struggled with those challenges and has made decisions and choices they think are best. I'm not going to second-guess those decisions except for one. The school board had the opportunity recently to put on the ballot a financing levy, and they chose not to do so. Based upon the news reports, that decision was made because I think it might be easier to get a successful levy in an opt-election year. And I don't agree with that rationale. I think the levy should have been put on the ballot and left to the citizens of Oatana to decide if we are willing to pay for the school system we have become accustomed to. I think if the vote was a straight-up decision about an operating levy that was the commitment this community has to its children, it would have succeeded. I believe it would have been better to have that question on the ballot when there will be a large turnout. Whatever the result, it would have reflected the will of the people. If approved, we would have the financing to help maintain the school and programs without additional deep cuts. Without the levy, I understand we need to make some additional cuts next year. That's going to require difficult decisions in the year ahead to remain fiscally solid. Even if an operating levy is approved in another year, we'll have had a year of cuts and challenges that might have been avoided or reduced. If a ballot initiative this year was defeated, then the board could have taken that as a mandate. If the city agrees, we'll make an additional cut, and we would have been responding to the will of the people. Our students deserve our commitment to prepare them for the challenges they're going to face after school and to prepare them for success. Our teachers also deserve our commitment and support to help them provide an outstanding education to all our students. I'll do whatever possible to help demonstrate that commitment to our school.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Mr. Seabring.
Good afternoon. My name is Mark Seabring. I'm from Oatana. I grew up here, and as I look at you, I sure recognize a lot of faces, and this is a nice opportunity, so thanks to the Rotary, thanks to the Chamber of Commerce for hosting this. I'm a product of the Oatana school system. I grew up, I graduated from OHS, attended the University of Minnesota, met my wife Barb there. We have two sons, both of whom are also graduates of OHS. I'm real happy, very proud to tell you that my boys came through the Oatana school system. My youngest, Brian, is finishing up. He's in the home stretch in Fargo. He's at NDSU. And my youngest is a Badger. He's down in Madison, UW-Madison. He's a sophomore down there. I'm a member of Trinity Lutheran Church. I have served on the school district foundation. I came into the foundation through the OHS Alumni Association about 10 years ago. That was formed with the assistance of Mr. Herzog, and a number of us have served on that. So I have five years of experience with the school district foundation, and it was about four or five years ago when I served on a task force that looked at the facilities here for the school district, and I feel like those were, those have been two very good pieces of experience for me, as I look forward to the opportunity to serve you on the school board. Thanks.
Thank you. And bonus points for, to Mr. Seabring for being the only one that I did not have to cut off. But minus points for forgetting to mention the fact that the People's Press also asked. But Mr. Seabring, we're going to start with you then for the first question. We'll come back this way. Mr. Wall and Mr. Wall, I would remind you, there's a microphone right in front of you that you two can share, and we will leave the other microphone for Mr. Anderson and Mr. Van Norden. First question, Mr. Seabring, we'll start with you. What are two or three specific outcomes you expect from the school district if you are elected? Mr. Seabring.
What are two or three outcomes of the school district?
That you expect from the school district if you are elected.
Well, I can't honestly look you in the eye and tell you that just because I would be elected, that these are outcomes that would naturally happen. But in preparation for running, I have spent time talking to people that serve on school boards, past school board members, administrators, teachers, and parents, and it does seem to me that there are three overriding issues here with the school district right now. First of which is, we need a new superintendent. And I'm going to borrow a phrase from Charlie Herman, "We need an all-American type superintendent for our school district." Items two and three are going to be more systemic, and they're going to be more long-term, and the first of which is going to be the budget. I'm in the financial services profession, and I'm a voracious reader of what's going on economically. And by all appearances, we are facing some, what would appear to be decreasing funding that we can't expect from the state. The third item that I think is going to be a big issue for us as a school district is going to be the facilities.
Thank you. Mr. Bill Wall. Oh, same question. Same question.
Oh, well, it's, I think Mark gave some pretty good answers to that. The school superintendent role is an important one, making sure that we have somebody who has leadership and vision for the future, not just maintaining status quo is very important. Managing our budget is very important. Dealing with the demographic shifts we have in the school system is real important. There is a difference in achievement, apparently, between different groups within the school system. We need to do what we can to maintain the current high levels of those who are achieving well and close the gap by bringing in the underachievers up. It's so important that we give our children the opportunity to succeed. Without a good quality education, we cannot do that. They cannot do that. We can't just have them do the ABCs and go off in the world. They need to have additional skills and abilities and a good grounding to be able to be successful in whatever careers they have.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Mr. KJ Wall, same question.
Well, three issues or three outcomes that I would drive. First is credibility with the community. We've got to, there's a credibility issue with the board. I hear it every day on the streets. We've got to bridge that gap. I've learned very quickly in my appointment that we cannot make progress whichever direction we decide is best for the community without the community's support and trust. So how do you do that? Well, you start with the little things. You let people talk about agenda items during meetings, which we've already changed. We put things on a discussion item before we vote on them in the following meeting. You don't rush things through. Second issue, we've got to balance the budget. We can't be operating deficit mode day in and day out. Third, we've got to get the right leader for the community, which means hiring the best, highly-qualified individual who is the best fit for this community. Those are the three results that I would drive home.
Thank you. Mr. Van Norden.
Thank you. I'll get it out. First of all, you used a great educational term, outcomes, as those in the education business will know. Closing the credibility gap is also on my list. I think it's extremely important. As I announced that I was going to run and started talking with folks in the rural community, that's one of the things that came through loud and clear with everyone, almost everyone I talked to. We have a major issue there. And one of the things that I thought would be a good thing to do is only have the student-teacher, our student teacher, excuse me, the teacher, parent-teacher conferences. Maybe we should have some school board members sitting there so that when parents are sitting, seeing their teachers, they can also stop by and see us and visit about the schools. Second thing, I think we need all-day, everyday kindergarten in our school system. I think we may be the only school system in this area that does not have it. I agree with the budget issues as well. I think they're important, and also the superintendent issue is extremely important. But all-day kindergarten is critical. I have a granddaughter that's in the New Richmond-Harton School District that is going to all-day, every day.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Mr. Anderson, same question.
A couple of outcomes I'd be looking for, student achievement, that's what we have to accomplish. That's the only reason we're in the schools, involved in schools, is to increase the student achievement. The second, financial, there's such critical issues there. We need to quit cutting. We need to figure out ways that we're going to be able to balance our budget and not have to continue to cut because cutting the schools means we're cutting teachers, ultimately need to cutting programs or increasing class sizes. And then the third, the credibility gap. And, you know, we've heard it all over, I've heard it in the community, and echoing the comments I already made, credibility gap is something we need to really focus on, and then certainly a superintendent that's going to help us achieve all those goals.
Thank you. Mr. Bill Wall, we are going to start the next question with you. The next question, "The school district is balancing its budget with a combination of cutting expenses and spending reserves. What is your solution for the fiscal challenge facing the district?"
Balancing our budget is a multi-pronged approach. First off, we have to make sure that the money we're spending is being spent on the right place, that we don't have any waste in it, that we're investing in our priorities. So we need to know what our priorities are. Obviously, the students, but then there's other priorities such as the facilities. We need to make sure that we are maximizing our use of all of our facilities and try to avoid having to increase our budgets in those areas. Secondly, I think that we should have passed the, put on the ballot, the operating levy. I don't think there's any doubt, we're going to have to do an operating levy next year. I think that this community will support an operating levy if the only thing on the ballot is the operating levy and not hooked up with several other things which maybe aren't as popular with the citizens as making sure the students have a good school system. I think that was one of the mistakes we made in previous years, that we tried to do too much. So I think that we're going to have to have a little --
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Mr. KJ Wall, same question.
Well, I'll go back to the credibility issue. First of all, you involve the community. All stakeholders in the community have to be a part of the solution when it comes to our budget issues. It's not just expenditures and revenues. At the end of the day, we're making cuts every year over the next two to three fiscal years, multimillion-dollar cuts, and at the same time, in almost equal amounts, spending down our reserves. So we're deficit spending in the midst of program cuts. So it's got to start with community involvement, making them meaningful participants in the process. We have buy-in, and we've got credibility on the issue. Second, when it comes down to it, it is expenses and revenues. You just have to establish a criteria. We need to do it equitably across all groups, and we need to do it in a way that protects the classroom. What cuts can we make and what revenue solutions can we come up that is, that are going to protect our classrooms and have the least impact on student-teacher ratios and learning?
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Mr. Van Norden.
First of all, I think it's really important that somehow we step back and get, what is our vision for this, for our community schools? You've got to start there, and then, as you cut, which we have to do, always keep that vision in mind. I think that's critically important. I also think we need to really be looking harder. Are we getting the most dollars for the tax dollars being spent? Are we spending our money? Why isn't it? I think that's another important issue. I also think we need to look at the community and resources in the community and look at some more sharing. For example, Riverland Community College is a place where we could share some of our high school facilities, some of our high school kids might be able to go out there, but there are some things that we can do, I think, with Riverland Community College and the business community as we look at trying to educate our kids for the future.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson.
Several years ago, the board made a decision to spend down the reserves, so what we've been doing over the last few years was intentional. I wasn't part of the board at the time, but it was decided that was, made sense. We actually were penalized by the state for being a district that had a lot of reserves, so we purposely did that. But moving forward, we have to make sure we quit doing that. We can't continue to spend down. We have to match our reserves with our spending. One of our key issues is with a school district, about 75% of our revenue goes out in the form of personnel. So we have to be very careful on what we do on the personnel side, yet find ways to not be cutting teachers. We have to cut non-teaching staff to the extent that we can, yet still get all of our activities done. And certainly getting the community involved in making these decisions will be key moving forward to make sure everyone is, everyone buys into what we're doing and understands what we're doing and why we're doing it.
Thank you. Mr. Seabring, will you clarify for me?
I'll do the best I can, sir.
Would you re, would you state the question one more time?
I would be happy to. "The school district is balancing its budget with a combination of cutting expenses and spending reserves. What is your solution for this fiscal challenge?"
And is the nature of your question, are you telling me that the spending or levy, an increased levy is not a part of the question?
I did not say that, sir.
Okay. I would, okay, as a potential board member, I would, I would open that question up and ask Oatana to seriously also consider the possibility of a levy. And I understand that it's not going to be on this year's, on this year's ballot, but I do believe that the past boards and administration have done a very good job. There has been a buffer, and we do have a little bit of room left with the buffer in terms of how much room we have left before we're not, before we start spending cash that we do not have. But I do believe that the number-one priority would be that teaching-student time, that that is the priority, and that things that do not fall under that umbrella, things that are not directly related to teacher-student time, would be the things that would unfortunately need to be cut.
Thank you, sir. Mr. KJ Wall, we will begin the next question with you. As the search for a new superintendent commences, what are the skills and characteristics you believe are crucial to the new hire's success? Mr. Wall.
And maybe you'll hear a theme start to develop in my responses, but first of all, again, I go back to community involvement and credibility. It's a process that has to involve all stakeholders in the community, teachers, administration board, business owners, taxpayers. All stakeholders have to be involved in the process. They have to be invested in it, and they have to have buy-in in the process. Again, every major decision that we have to make as a board has to be influenced through the public. As for the skills, what is clear is we've got to have somebody that's going to be in the community, a visible figurehead in the community. I love what Pete's been doing in the interim role. He's in and out of the schools. He's talking to the stakeholders in the community. We have to have somebody that obviously has the skill set to do this job, but is active and has great communication skills, that you can communicate and be a consensus builder.
Thank you. Mr. Van Norden.
I asked a friend when I was running, or running for the board, what do you, what kinds of things do you like, or what is important as you run for the board? And he said, superintendents are two things you look for, or two types. One type really deals with the financials well. The other type basically does well with community relations, that type of thing. Our superintendent schools needs to, in this case, deal with the, with the community and community involvement. I very much agree with building that credibility gap that's there, and our superintendent schools is the best ambassador we would have to do that. So I would be leaning toward, when we look at superintendents, one that does a really good job of working with and for the community and gets out in the community, mixes with the community.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson.
In searching for a superintendent, certainly I would look for somebody who really understands what the future direction of education is. I can see a lot of changes in education. The way we were taught, most of us back in the '50s and '60s and '70s, is going to be very different moving to the next generation, so I think he needs to be someone who, he or she needs to be focusing on that. Certainly somebody that can be out front, in front of the community, involved in the community, engaged in the community, and at the same time engaged with the schools and be visible in the schools and engaged with the various, the superintendents, the teachers, the principals, all the school staff. They need to be, you know, going to be a superhuman-type person to do all these things, but I think we need that in front of an individual to lead us moving forward.
Thank you. Mr. Seabring.
I think you're going to hear me say a very similar, probably, description of a superintendent. You know, as a community member, I can't honestly tell you that I know exactly what the behind-the-scenes, dotting of i's and crossing of the t's, responsibilities of a superintendent, but clearly I would definitively want this person to be at every choir concert, every wrestling meet, every football game, every basketball game, to be there, to be available, and to be approachable. Because I think in large part, we as a community base a lot of our decision on whether or not we're going to support various levies and bond referendums that come forward based upon how accessible and how -- upon how accessible and how available is this person, and is he one of us? Is he, can I trust him? Can I believe him? And that, that credibility and that trust is built by being out there and being available to the community.
Thank you. Mr. Wall.
Well, first and foremost, he has to be a good manager. He has to be able to handle the budget issues. He has to have good communication skills. Those skills have to be both to the board, letting us know what he is hearing, he or she is hearing, and down towards the teachers and administrative staff, and even students within the school system. It can't be a one-way communication. Has to develop very good relationships with the teachers, so the teachers can tell the superintendent what kind of issues they're facing in the class, and give them the opportunity to provide the tools to keep our students successful. Has to be willing to look for creative solutions, and I think I look for somebody with a stronger commitment to the arts such as drama and music as they have to academics and sports, because that is a critical part of the Oatana school system as well.
Thank you. Mr. Van Norden, we are going to start to turn to some audience-generated questions now. And you can see Brad is continuing to bring me questions, which is good. If you have a question, you need to write it down on a piece of paper and signal to Brad, and he will be glad to pick that up. We're going to actually combine a couple of questions here. Mr. Van Norden will bring it, first one to you to begin with. The question, "The Oatana School District suffered defeats at the ballot box in 2007, 2008, 2010, and 2011. Why? And why did the latest bond vote fail in the rural parts of the district? And how can that be addressed in the future?" Mr. Van Norden.
Well, I think it first becomes a part of the credibility issue again, as I talk with people in the rural community. They don't seem to like what's going on within the school system, they don't seem to understand what's going on. I think a communication link is really important. And you have to understand that rural people are people who want practical answers, they want you to be, have common sense as to what kinds of issues and solutions you might add to the problem. So common sense, paying attention to and communicating with them, what you're attempting to accomplish in the school system, I think are really important for rural people. And I don't have a good answer other than that.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson.
Yeah, we've had several failures at the ballot box. Primarily, we've had quite a few different issues that came up that were fairly complicated. We had a question one, a question two, a question three, and it was very confusing whether if you answered question one, yes, and question two, no. Did that mean if you answered yes to all three of them, that was clear? But if you answered yes and no to various ones, it wasn't clear. So we have to be very clear with our message, very clear with what our need is, and very clear on why we need that, what we're going to do with those funds. If we did that moving forward, it'll be much easier to get one of these levy passes. As far as why the rural vote, I think they look at it very similar to everybody else. We need to make sure that the funds are going to be used well, and I don't know that we necessarily got that message across very well.
Thank you. Mr. Seabree.
I do think that the economy has played a pretty significant role in these past failures, and it would be, it would be difficult to not lift that up and say, across the board, it's pretty difficult to think about increasing a tax base when your neighbor, or maybe even a couple of your neighbors, don't have a job. That, to me overridingly, has been the number one issue. And I think, and I'm going to echo what David just said, I think that the clarity of the issues has been a little bit muddy. And, and perhaps we need, perhaps we need a couple of wins. I'm not talking about the kind of win where you have to come from 41-7 at halftime to win the game, but I think we need, I think we need some understandable, smaller steps to, to see a series of successes with our bonds and levies.
Thank you. Mr. Wall.
Well, I think that the economy does have a part in it. We all are challenged economically. People complain about taxes all the time, you hate to see them go up. I think that probably has a part of it. I, I think that a great deal of it was doing too much on the ballots. I don't think it was a lack of communication so much as trying to pair things together that maybe weren't good fits. You know, in the last levy, I talked to a lot of people who said they would have voted for the Will Creek expansion, but it was paired with another option they did not like, and so they had no choice but to vote no. I think that if we keep our bond referendums to a very specific purpose and keep it very simple, such as the operating levy and not combine with other things, we have a greater chance of success. I think the people of Oatana are willing to commit to their children in the school system, we just had to give a clean option.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Wall.
And I'll just build upon some of the answers that were already given. At the end of the day, there are a lot of variables that I've heard to explain the election results, but the first thing to remember is that most of the elections were very close, so that there is a lot of support and a natural tendency in our community, from my perspective, to support the school system and to make Oatana a school of choice. But at the end of the day, I think we go back to the trust issue and the credibility. At the end of the day, I heard too many people say they just didn't trust the information that they were being provided. I think the answer to that is to move forward with visibility, transparency, and to have the stakeholders in the community be actively involved. The key there is active involvement. We've had task force historically that have worked with the school district on these issues, but what has not happened is they've not had free rein to investigate and explore and get all the evidence and the documentation that the board has had, that the administration has. They have to have free rein.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Mr. Anderson, we'll go with the next question with you. And this is really a combination of two questions that we have coming from our audience. Class size is becoming an issue in our district. How will you look into and address the school crowding situation, particularly knowing what the budget restrictions will be? Mr. Anderson.
Okay. On the class size, we have a couple of issues there. There's some issues within the elementary schools. If you look at our enrollment and what our targets are for all the way kindergarten all the way through to third grade, we exceed our, our target numbers in every single school and every single class, with the exception of one school, I believe in second grade is the only one that we're below our target. So really, the only way to address that is by trying to figure out how we can possibly find another teacher. We do have some issues where, say, third grade, there's, there's almost 400 students in third grade, whereas second grade, there's only about 350 or 330 kids in third grade or in second grade. So there's, there's a couple of areas where we have a large, large number of kids going through in one particular grade. And then we have issues in the high school where we might have a class that might have 40 students, and we're going to have to, from a scheduling standpoint, I think, address that. Very different solutions to those different problems, but we need to kind of look at both of them and try to get a total solution.
Thank you. Mr. Seabree.
Folks, I think, and I've touched on this earlier, that anything that stands in the way of time that a teacher has with a student, for me, that is priority number one. And, and by that, I mean, it's priority number one, and it's way, 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 way up here, and everything else has, is a very, very distant second. And, and there are probably a number of equations that, as an outsider looking in, I'm not privy to at this point, and I'm completely unaware of, but I would say that those things would have to be secondary items to student teacher time.
Thank you. Mr. Wall.
Well, when we're talking about class sizes, I think that's a function of the overall size of the, the class, that, you know, whether it be a sophomore, junior, senior year of class. We have a finite number of teachers, and we have 400 kids versus the last year, we had 350 kids, that you're going to have larger class sizes. I think the first thing we need to do is understand what the problem is, and if it is a short-term issue or is it a long-term issue? I think we need to do a little bit of a demographic analysis to find out, what is the Oatana school system doing? Is it growing? And why is it growing? Where's that root coming from? I understand, like, for instance, we have a couple of large class sizes in kindergarten and in the third grade. Is that going to continue through the junior high, all the elementary schools and into the high school? Or is it a one-time situation? We can't develop a solution for something that's not going to continue because then we'll have wasted class space. We need to understand how big and how long the problem's going to be there, and decide if we need a short-term solution or a long-term solution.
Thank you. Mr. Wall.
It's a great question, and I think it, it's an opportunity to also talk about board function first and foremost. A lot of the solutions have to come from the administrative level. We can set the objective of addressing class size, and that is a board function, but at the end of the day, it's the administration, the teachers, they have to develop the best path to get to that end. So philosophically, I think that's the approach we have to take, is let's let the experts figure out the best solutions. Second, I, I think that, at the end of the day, we may not have a way to address in this economic crisis, class size issues. So we have to continue to recruit and hire the best of the best in terms of our teachers. We are very, very fortunate to have exceptional teachers in the classroom that are very committed to this organization. They are the ones that have to overcome that at some level. Beyond that, we have to look at some of our startup programs. Are they delivering education on an equitable basis as official classrooms?
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Mr. Van Norden.
Well, first of all, it's an extremely difficult issue with the dollars that we have. The obvious solution is more teachers. I think my kids, we're in classes of three and four, 300, 400, when they were going to school here, so I'm not so sure that our school has grown that much in, in size, but I wonder if our teaching staff hasn't been reduced to the point that we have this type of a problem. Maybe we have to look at technology a little bit more and try to use technology more, get more technology in the classrooms. Maybe we can be more effective in working with more, with fewer teachers working with more students. I certainly agree with teacher contact time being really critical. It's the most important issue we have, and I'm not sure how we, how we solve that, that problem. But my best, my best shot at this without spending a lot of money to hire a lot of staff is, is try to look at technology more.
Thank you. Mr. Seabree, I believe we are back to you to begin a question. And the question is, what are your thoughts regarding all-day, everyday kindergarten? Mr. Seabree.
I'm completely in favor of it.
Well, that was easy. Mr. Wall.
I really have nothing to add.
Thank you. Mr. Wall.
No attorney, including myself, is going to give up two minutes or three minutes. But mostly, I want to just emphasize, what you get with me, I think, is a commitment to a process regardless of what the issue is, whether it's all-day kindergarten or, or budget issues. I think you start with, let's gather all the information so we have the best information to make the best decision. Let's involve all the stakeholders, again, in this process so that they feel that they had a fair opportunity to address the question, become fully invested, and then they become the ones that can get out in front of the public and drive and help support the implementation and getting the job done, so to speak. And so personally, I'd, I'd love to see all the kindergarten. We also know that ties into spacing issues and a number of, and how do you pay for that? So one question raises about 15 others, but what I think you'll get with me is a commitment to the process that will get us to the best results at the end of the day.
Thank you. Mr. Van Norden.
As I mentioned before, I'm polite. I think I have my kids that, that are participating at this point, and so I think it's really critical. The space is an issue. Where do we, where do we put these kids? And so if there's any way, as we look at our budget, any way we can squeeze in everyday kindergarten in to our, into our budgeting process, we're going to have to try to do it. We have to work very hard to get it into the budget, however we can do it, it's number one issue for me.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson.
I'm certainly supportive of it. The evidence, anything I've ever read certainly supports that it's a very critical time within the educational development of students, to catch them early, catch them, and get them pushed a little bit more. Certainly, there's going to be a lot of effort on how to create a solution to both fund it and where are we going to put these extra students. We don't have empty classrooms sitting all over our district, so there are, as KJ mentioned, several other questions that will lead from, we make that strategic decision if that's what we want to do. But certainly, I'm supportive of it, and I think creatively, if we engage the community, we can probably find a solution and a way to make that happen.
Thank you. Mr. Bill Wall, we'll begin the next question with you, and this question was raised by more than one person in our audience. The version of the question we will ask is this, "Should the district ask the question of purchasing the Pillsbury property again?" Mr. Wall.
I don't believe we should. I believe that the potential costs versus the benefits are not in our favor. The Pillsbury facility, it's nice and convenient to, to the high school, I recognize that, but there is a substantial cost to make that purchase, and then a larger substantial cost to renovate it and repurpose it into something that will work for our students. It is not being built, it has not been built with any kind of ability for new technology. It's basically dorm rooms and some classrooms and stuff, but it's old technology, old, old school, if you will. The cost to upgrade it to the point where it's going to be a 21st century classroom is prohibitive for the benefit we get out of it. I think we should move on and look for something else.
Thank you. Mr. Wall.
Not only do attorneys use all their time, but their favorite answer is it depends, and I think that's what we're left with here. It depends, what are the purchase prices? What's your long-term planning for the district? It really depends. So I go back to process again. How do we address all of these issues in a way that's going to get us to the best result? Well, you first of all have to have a facility, a site facility plan that decides and determines what is our long-term plan in terms of space and facilities. Second, you take that issue to the stakeholders. You have a task force of all interested members in the community, you have them actively and meaningfully participate in that question, and they're going to then drive us into the right direction and, and answer that question whether we take it to a vote or, or not at the end of the day. So goes back to process, but look, for now, we've got a credibility issue to address, we've got to balance the budget, and we've got to hire a new superintendent. Those are the pressing issues right now, and there's scarce time for anything else in the next coming years.
Thank you. Mr. Van Norden.
I really have mixed feelings about the Pillsbury issue as well. I just don't think we have enough good information about how that area, that property is going to be used at this point. And so I am really not in favor of it until we get a really good, clear-cut plan on how that property is going to be used. And I agree with, it doesn't fit into the long-range plan this district has for facilities. And I'm not sure if we have a long-range plan for our district, but I think we need one. Let's take a look at facilities, put together a long-range plan, then we can kind of match up what property is available in this community that will meet the, the needs of that long-range plan.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson.
Certainly, I, I would go with KJ. It's not a simple yes or no answer. Right now, we have a lot of other pressing issues. Certainly, we're going to have to make sure we get our budget in order. We're going to have to get a superintendent. We have a levy coming up. We certainly have to look at student achievement, and we have some other things that probably would be a higher priority on my list, looking at what we're going to do for possibly all-day kindergarten and some things there. So for the short term, I don't think it's anything that we can consider, but depending on what the plan is that's put together and what the community comes to, and I would look at the community to hopefully kind of lead the charge on this, if that, if that's really what needs to happen, and a clear plan that says this is what we're going to do. But right now, from a priority list, it wouldn't make it my priority list initially.
Thank you. Mr. Seabree.
I am also going to echo KJ's sentiments. I think that the priority number one for our district is a new superintendent. I think priority number two is to really understand our budget, and, and not just for this year, and not just for this next year, but really for a decade. That's an overriding issue. It's a huge, enormous issue. The third thing is the facilities, and, and I know that there are people even in this room that put a lot of time and energy, this is a, folks, this is a tremendously personal and emotional issue for a lot of us, and I'm very, very respectful of that. And it's out of that respect that I have to tell you, I don't know. I don't know the best purpose for Pillsbury.
Thank you. Kind of following up on that question, KJ Wall, this question will come first to you. Considering that the present building is old, are we ready for a new Oatana High School? Mr. Wall.
Well, the one thing about giving a theme answer to every question is, like, I know I'm going to answer every question here, so, and hopefully you get to see a theme develop here, and it's, you know, again, favorite answer of attorneys, it, it really does depend. You know, as others have commented, you've got to have your site plan, your long-term strategy for your facilities. And until we have that in place, I'm, I'm sorry, but anybody that thinks they can answer that question, I have to seriously question on what information they're making that decision or that... or that commitment to. So again, I go back, all these issues, it's about process, you know? It's about, you know, establishing credibility and how do you do that? You get all stakeholders involved, you have the influential members of our community come together, analyze the issue along with the board and the administration, teachers, and you get everybody going on the same page and in the right direction, and that's, everything else is cake from there. Everything falls into place.
Thank you, sir.
Once you have the process.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Van Norden.
Well, one of the issues with the high school, I think, is how do we apply or use the technologies in that building? It's old, and we have some major problems with that building as far as using the advanced technologies and the advanced teaching techniques and methods that are available today. And so unless we have a really good plan that was very economical for converting that high school into a more modern-type high school, I would be in favor of going somewhere else with the building, simply because it's more economical. We just can't spend a lot of money in an old building and be successful and spend the taxpayers' money wisely. So I know people love that building, and I think we can take some pieces of that architecture of that building and build it into a new one, but I do think that it's an outdated building we're going to have difficulty using.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson.
I would certainly start with what's going to be the future of education. I can see education moving into a much more of a flexible, less rigid, less, everyone starts at eight, and classes always go from eight until 9:25, and the next class is at 9:30 to whatever. I can see us moving to a whole different kind of approach, and if we do anything different with the high school, it has to fit in with what education is going to be like in the future and not look at like what education was like in the past. So if we go down that path, it certainly has to be driven from an education perspective, what do we need from an education perspective, and drive it from there. I can, that building right now is not very flexible, and I think we're going to need something more flexible in the future. So I think at some point down the road, that's probably going to have to be on the agenda.
Thank you. Mr. Seabring.
I would probably say the same thing one more time. I do think that our priority, number one priority is our superintendent, number two is the budget. And as we start looking at facilities, boy, if you thought Pillsbury was emotional, OHS isn't it just a tremendously emotional issue? And it is for a lot of us. I'm a graduate of OHS. And OHS becomes even more difficult to get your arms wrapped around, simply because the 21 building, I mean, folks, we're getting very, very close to that building, having served our community for an entire century. And yet, as part of that building, there are some components of it that were built fairly recently that epitomize the direction of education and all the best things about education. I'll bet if I had dropped a marble in the hallway of the 21 building the day I graduated in 1979, I'll bet that marble is still rolling around. It was an old building then, it's an old building today. There's going to be a certain point where we've got to address it, and we've got to face up.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Mr. Wall.
We need to consider whether or not that particular building will fit the needs of the future. We need to look into the future and find out what the future of education really is. I know we have a lot of students today that take AP classes, for instance, over at Brooklyn and maybe some other schools. There's a lot of online education. We have to determine if this is going to be a facility that can meet those needs. We really can't approach that, however, until we get our finances in order and get the superintendent in order. Then I think the next step is that we do that demographic survey that I talked about and make sure we understand what kind of class sizes are going to be coming into the system and determine what size a school needs to be. Do we need just one replacement school, or do we need to think about a second school? Depends upon how much Owatonna grows in the future. We have a lot of questions that we can't answer. I don't think we can do anything with it at this point in time.
Thank you. Mr. Van Norden, I believe we are ready for you for the next question. The question is this. This comes from our audience. It is not a popular option, but at some point, we cannot continue to make cuts and keep the quality of education and programs expected by the community. What are the real options to get the needed funding other than expecting the state to send more money for education? Mr. Van Norden.
I will make a couple of comments here. As my former friends talked to me at the fair, and I had announced that I was running for the school board, one of them came up to me and said, you know what? Education is not funded correctly. And I agree with them 100%. We cannot keep funding education based on property taxes. It's not fair to the community, and it's not because a lot of those individuals who pay those taxes move to another community to buy their home and pay their taxes. And this is especially true of the rural schools. So my answer is that I believe education needs to be funded more with income taxes and with sales tax, and unfortunately, come from the state, because we just cannot continue to have property taxes funding the operating pieces that are operating part of our budget.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson.
Well, without getting a change in law from the state, we're going to have to get it locally. The state has been, over the last 10 years, pushing the funding of schools to local level. That's just a fact. Unless we can get people at the state to step up and accept responsibility, we're going to have to fund more of it locally if that's what we really want. If we want, as a community, say, schools are important, we're going to have to do a little bit more on the levy than we have in the past. But that's just the way the formulas are, the way the formulas work. Our funding comes from the state and from local levies. Those are the two sources. If the state isn't increasing it and the state isn't willing to change the funding mechanism such that they drive it from a different method, there isn't any other place but to get it from local.
Thank you. Mr. Seabring.
I would tend to agree. I do think that the levy is going to be probably the primary resource for how we stem that gap. And the second would be, and it's my understanding, that our relationship and our working relationship with the teaching staff does have some gaps in our model, and that, I guess the appropriate way of saying this would be, a level of creativity that we would ask on the part of our teaching staff to begin filling some of those gaps to allow for a little bit more of a cushion rather than just flat-out dead, untold time with our kids.
Thank you. Mr. Wall.
I think we're going to have to accept that the only way to adequately fund the education that we want in this school and in this community is that we're going to have to pony up a little bit more money. I am generally speaking against taxes or increased taxes. I think we all feel we pay our fair share. I know we get our funding today from property taxes, and we see our building values drop and our taxes go up, and it just doesn't feel good that we might ask for more money. But without some additional money, some additional operating levy, then the school system is going to suffer because we've only cut so much, and pretty soon, we're going to cut not just the excess, we're going to cut the essentials. And once we begin that, we begin a downward spiral, and the system doesn't become as good as it has been, and we can do this to the detriment of the community. We need a strong school system to remain a vibrant and growing community. So we're going to have to dig deeper into our pockets.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Wall.
We just have to focus on controlling what we can control, okay? Ron's right, the funding mechanism's flawed, but we can't directly control that outcome. So there's two options. There's revenue solutions, there's expense solutions. On the revenue side, it's very simple. The only way that we're realistically going to have more revenue coming in is to explore an operating levy, and we all know how that works. That's increase a tax burden. As far as the expense side goes, we've already gone through a significant round of cuts, and there's more to come, and we just have to make sure that we have a criteria for evaluating those cuts so that it creates the least impact on the classroom. For example, if there are teachers on special assignment, might be a time to call them back in just by way of example. But I go back to the three issues: credibility, balancing our budget, and getting the right leadership in place. If we don't have credibility, we're never going to move forward on any of these issues. So we have to focus on those.
Thank you, sir. I believe, Mr. Anderson, we're ready for you. Is that correct?
I'm not keeping track.
Okay. I guess I should keep track, shouldn't I? Hey, I am keeping score. Hey, Mr. Anderson, following up on the budget questions, we have a question here. Last spring, the district cut 1.8 million from its budget. Next spring, it will cut 1.2 million plus dip into its general fund. At what point does the district not just lay off staff, but also consider eliminating extracurricular programs or asking parents to fund those extracurricular activities? Mr. Anderson.
Well, yeah, certainly, we've been through a couple of rounds of budget cuts, and we have tapped into our general fund for some of this stuff. Looking at cutting extracurriculars, I was kind of looking at the numbers, going through the teacher's contract, and, you know, an athletic coach makes between $3,000 and $4,000 a year, and a teacher on average is about $60,000. So I'm starting to do the math and look at how many different, say, sports coaches we would have to cut, or speech coach, or, you know, all these different programs. And we would have to basically decimate everything we have on the extracurriculars just to equal one or two teachers. So I don't know that that's really going to solve these budget problems. I mean, the big issue is that funding from the state has been going up by less than 1% a year. Our levy has been flat for 10 years. When you do the math on that, our revenue has been going up for, over the last 10 years, by an average of about 0.8 or 0.9%, less than 1% for that number of years. That's the fundamental issue. We can play around with these other things, but we're not going to get there.
Thank you. Mr. Seabring.
This is a great question, and I, once again, I'm going to look y'all right in the eye and say, I don't have the right answer. I don't know the right answer to this. All I can honestly tell you is, if it has anything to do with a teacher and that teacher's time that it spends directly with a student, that sits on the top shelf and it's untouched. But if it's anything else, clearly, we have to be honest with ourselves, and we have to look at it. And it would, it could very possibly mean increasing the participation fees for kids that are doing stuff that's outside of the classroom, and by and large, I do, I really honestly believe that the levy, the upcoming board is going to need to do an outstanding job of being very self-effacing with the community to be out there and to really promote the idea of why the new levy and what it would do for the community, what's the value for the community.
Thank you. Mr. Wall.
I don't much like the idea of having to cut some of our extracurricular activities. Lots of our students participated in those activities. They get benefits out of it that are not purely academic, but they're very important: teamwork, how to deal with adversity, discipline. There's a lot of benefits to that already. Plus, I think a lot of the parents already provide a lot of funding for some of our extracurricular activities, so they boost the class. I believe that the music booths of Owatonna just help fund a part of the music program, as a matter of fact. So we're already doing that as parents. I think if we need to, we go back and ask them to do a little bit more, but I do think it goes back to making the right choices and the money that we are spending, make sure it's spent in the right place, try to avoid cutting back on things that are important to the school overall and to the individual students, and then going back and asking the community for that operating levy. I hate to say that, I hate to do that, but otherwise, we are going to cut.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Mr. Wall.
Well, you can look at our revenue and expenditure, long-range forecasting, and you can see that we're in crisis mode now in terms of our financial situation. So nothing's off the table, including extracurriculars, but we also have to be smart about how we approach it and get the most impact from our cuts. And Tom can correct me if I'm wrong, and if he buries his head in the table, you know I gave the wrong number, but I think it's less than half a million dollars for funding all of our extracurriculars out of a roughly $50 million budget. Where are you going to get your bang for the buck? And at the end of the day, it's all a cost-benefit analysis. What are the educational benefits that spill over into the classroom, et cetera? But you go back to process, the community has to be involved, and they have to set the criteria on how are we going to prioritize cuts in addition to where are we going to focus our energies on revenue solutions, get them invested and behind and support the direction we're going.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Mr. Van Norden.
Well, difficult question again. To me, one area that hasn't been mentioned much here is the administrative side, and I really think we need to take, in my perspective, a much closer look on the administrative side, and are we overspending in that area as well? And not much has been said about that here. As far as the extracurricular goes, yes, I'm very concerned about low-income people, low-income families being able to participate in the school systems, extracurricular activities. And I would just suggest that maybe our business community can help us in this area by giving scholarships, that type of thing, to some of the low-income kids so that they can also participate just as well as those who can afford the extra fees that may come as we try to maintain our extracurricular activities. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Seabring will begin the next question with you. And gentlemen, actually, it's going to be three questions kind of rolled into one, three questions from our audience, and this will be the last question, so I do apologize if we were unable to get to your question today. So I'm going to read all three questions, then ask you an overarching question, if you will. The first question is this: Will you be able to stand up for what you believe, or will you be just another yes board member? Second question: How would you define the day-to-day responsibilities as a member of the school board? Of those, which are your strongest? And the third: There has been a lot of turnover on the board in the last 18 months. Please explain your current work and family situation and why you feel you would be able to finish your term if elected. So gentlemen, the overarching question is this: How are you personally the right person for the school board? Mr. Seabring.
Very often, I'm asked the question when I'm out and about, why are you running for the school board? And sometimes, I don't know if I should take that question personally, or if people are just inviting the question and making nice conversation. It's circumstances like this where you have the opportunity to ask these questions, and that yes-man question is a great question. And KJ has done a very nice job today of summarizing, I think, how generally people in Owatonna feel about board membership simply serving as yes people. And I would be quick to tell you, the reason that you would want me to be on the board is not only because I'm patient and I will listen to what you have to say, but by the same token, if I don't agree with what you have to say, I'll make sure you understand that, and not in a demeaning way, but as a board member, it's my responsibility to make sure that decisions are made with your input, but the other facts as well.
Jeffrey? Jeffrey? Can we just switch the battery? Can we just?
Oh, one moment please, because we're going to make a switch on the battery.
I don't want Billy to cut off.
Okay. All right. Mr. Wall.
One of the programs that the school system has been implementing the last couple of years is a version of the Stephen Covey Seven Habits for Highly Effective People. And one of the most important ones of those is seek first to understand, and that's part of what I will bring to the school board, is when something comes up, I'll try to understand what the implications are, both for the immediate situation and for the future, and then make decisions based upon that. As a school board, it's our job to provide vision and direction to the school administrators and then let them implement. We need to be willing to say yes when the time is right and willing to say no when the time is wrong. So we, I will be willing to understand what the situation is, and then whatever I believe is appropriate, I'll take that stand and support that in school board meetings, whether I'm overruled or not, but I will make sure that.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Mr. Wall.
Well, I've heard a lot about just being more than a yes person, and I've had everybody at work drill that into me, and I take that role seriously. Hopefully, if you followed what we've done, I think that I've demonstrated, at least in my limited time, that I'm committed to that. You know, there is an issue with whether or not we're going to have an interim and a consultant concurrently running together, and I think I stood my ground on that issue, which may not have been popular with everybody at the time, but I'm willing to stand the ground. I get paid to do that day in and day out as an attorney of federated, not to give answers you want to hear, but to call it the way I see it. I think that's part of my strength. I have analytical abilities as an attorney, consensus-building, and advocacy skills that translate very well into the position. And why am I going to stand it out? Well, I've got my kids. They're just starting in this district. They're there for another 10 to 15 years, and I'm committed to be there for them throughout the time.
Thank you. Mr. Van Norden.
Well, my answer to the question is that I ask questions. I think that's one of the attributes that I would bring to the board. I ask a lot of questions, and I think that's really important. I'm one of the... I'm uncomfortable when I know when the best answer, I'd rather have somebody asking them. So that's one of the strengths and attributes that I think I bring to the board. Friends tell me that I'm also very good at taking very complex matters and lots of data coming in front of me and I can zero in on the issue. And I think that's a strength that I have. As far as my term, I'm retired and I have lots of time on my hands that I can do the study and the research and develop the questions that maybe need to be asked of the district. So I intend to finish my term, my four-year term, simply because I'm retired if elected. So those are my strengths, I see. I also have a real good understanding of financial stuff and also I'm very good at problem solving.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson?
For me, personally, I tend to listen first. I'm much more of a listener, try to gather the facts and then use that to make some evaluations. I certainly don't hesitate to stand my ground. I think my wife would certainly attest to that, one that she wants me to. I'm also a soccer referee, so I make the call and I know that I have to stand by that call. It's the same thing on the school board. You make a decision, you have to stand by it, whether it's necessarily popular or not. Certainly, this year, we've had quite a few decisions where it wasn't a 7-0. There were a lot that weren't 7-0 decisions. And, you know, during the course of the discussions, certainly, I don't hesitate to explain my position and try to back it up with some solid information as to why that's what I'm thinking. And so far, I think the board has worked very well in working to come up to some type of a consensus as we've discussed issues.
Thank you. We have come to that portion for our closing statements and we are going to begin with Bill Wall and then go to Mark Sebring. And the reason we are going that direction is because we want to keep those two gentlemen together since they are both running for the two-year term. Then, Mr. Anderson, we'll come to you, then, Mr. Van Norden, and KJ Wall, we will end with you. So at this particular point, we will turn to Bill Wall for his closing statement.
The next couple of years are gonna be very difficult to be a school board member. We're gonna be called upon to make some very difficult decisions, not all of which will be popular with the community, but we have to make those decisions in order to keep the school system going. I think what I'm gonna bring to the school board if selected, is that I will seek to understand what the issues are. I will seek input from the community. I've had a lot of people talk to me about different things since they found out that I was throwing my head in the wind and I've gotten some pretty good ideas from them, including a lot of people who've been telling me they would have supported Oatana if it had been on the ballot. Once we understand what the issues are, we need to make decisions. I'm very good at making decisions and then I stand by them. And once we make a decision as a school board, we need to communicate to our constituents, which is the students and the city itself, as to why we made that decision and what may be limited us in our decision-making ability. A lot of people, people will understand decisions that they don't agree with if you explain to them why you made that decision and what the constraints are. An outstanding school system such as we have in Oatana, it's essential to a strong and vibrant community. We have a great community in Oatana. I'm very proud to be here and be a part of it. But the school system is the incubator of developing our future leaders, both for the civic and business activities. If we want Oatana to continue to grow and be a vibrant city, we need to develop and nurture the students, to prepare them for the challenges they will face in the years ahead. And that is what I see as the central role of the school board member, is helping our students become successful.
Thank you. Mr. Sebring?
I'm gonna end today and I'm gonna end at the same place that I started. I'm from Oatana. I grew up here and I made a very conscious and very deliberate decision to move back to Oatana and raise my kids here. I can take you back to the day in 1993 when I was taking my two kids for a walk and I was going through Lawton Elementary School in Seattle, Washington. Seattle schools were just a mess at that point in time. And I said to myself, "What am I doing? Why am I here?" And I wanted to move back to Oatana. And Barb and I set the wheels in motion to come back to Oatana and I couldn't be happier that I've done so. We're very fortunate. We're very unique here in Oatana that we have an economic climate that, and you'll excuse my way of phrasing this, but we have an outstanding blue-collar environment, we have an outstanding white-collar environment, and we have an outstanding agricultural environment. And I think that the educational system that the Oatana school system provides that helps and fosters and nurtures those three economic engines is beyond compare. I think that somebody way, way ahead of me, a long time ago, here in Oatana, worked hard and crafted a very, very sound system that is the basis for the education that we have here in Oatana today. I couldn't be more proud of that. I'm a Boy Scout. And when I was a Boy Scout, they always said, "You gotta leave a place better than you started, you founded." When you go camping and you're out in a place that's out in nature, you gotta make sure that you leave it in better shape than you found it. I absolutely positively believe that. I think that I have a responsibility that I've gotta give back. Oatana School District was good to me, it's been good to my kids, and I take it upon myself to leave it in an even better place for your kids and your grandkids.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson?
Why should you vote for Dave Anderson? Well, first, I do have experience on the board. I've been on it for a year. There's a lot that I've learned in that year and right now, it's a critical time with all the things we have going up with the superintendent search, with the levy potential coming up with the budget cuts. We have a lot of things that we really have to tackle right away. We need somebody that can hit the ground running. I have tremendous drive. I'm doing this because I wanna do this. I have a lot of other things that keep you busy, but I certainly have a drive to do this and I engage the community in that process. I truly have a focus on the kids. I've been doing various things with the community. I've, you know, been coaching and refereeing and doing a lot of stuff for 15 years. This is just a different avenue for me to help engage in the community. I have a tremendous head for numbers. I think Tom Sager will attest to that. I do quiz him on numbers and ask him a lot more detail. We get the budget book and I'm still asking more questions on, "Why is this number here? Can you explain to me, this number doesn't seem to match up with this? Can you explain this detail?" And I do push for that and I have a strong head for numbers as we go through these budget cuts. Certainly, the first level, the high number, high-level cut, but then we have to understand each one of those cuts, what do they mean when you go down and go down to the detail and not just, you know, "We're gonna cut three teachers." That means we're gonna increase the class sizes at Lincoln from 22 to 24 in the second grade. We need to understand to that level of detail at the board level so we can make sure that we don't do things that interfere with our goal of making sure that we're focusing on the kids. And I'm open-minded. When I look at decisions and approach, anything that comes across, I don't go in with a preconceived notion. I don't necessarily think that I know most of the stuff before we get there, but through the discussions that we have at the board and through trying to take it a reasonable approach to solving these problems, taking a creative approach, looking at different solutions, looking at how we can not just take the simple solution, but let's figure out what the best solution is, that's kinda what I specialize in, is finding those unique solutions.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Van Norden?
I'm gonna ask you the question, "Is there anything more important to this community than a quality school system?" And a second question, as people from the outside look at our community, isn't it the quality of the school system that most measures whether they are going to locate their business here, come here to work, or come here to live? This community has given my family the best gift that it could give, and that's a quality education for my kids. All of my kids have four-year college degrees and two of them have master's degrees. I'm running for the school board to give back to my community the great gift, something that since they've given this great gift to me and my family. So what do I have to give, is the next question you might ask. First, my experience teaching and working with business management. I have long work with business analysis, budgeting, long-range planning. I've helped many farm families work through some very serious economic situations that they found themselves in. I think that many of these skills and insights can be applied to the situation that a local school district faces now. As revenue shrink and as demand for services from the school system increase. Secondly, I'm an experienced educator. I understand that there's more to education than simply producing a product or a service. We are affecting people's lives and their futures and we're affecting the future of this community. My experiences from, my experience comes from outside the school system, which I think is an advantage that I have. I think it gives me a little different insight into the issues that the school district may be facing. I also know that the aha moments is what a teacher lives for. The aha moments that we have with our students as they apply what they're learning to their lives.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Mr. KJ Wall?
Thank you and thanks to everybody for giving us that opportunity to talk to you and I welcome anybody to ask these questions, whether we're out and about in public. And I know you will because I've not been able to go to the grocery store or anywhere in the community without somebody asking these questions and I actually, I like that. I enjoy having those conversations. But all in where I started, the three issues that regardless of who's in the office, I think we've got to tackle, it's first and foremost, the credibility issue and gathering trust in the community of the board and the administration. I learned very quickly when I was appointed into the board position that we've got very challenging substantive issues that we've got to tackle and those are hard and challenging enough in and of themselves, but what I also learned is that we've got a credibility issue to face too because if teachers don't believe, you know, if teachers feel that we're protecting certain programs over the others and we're not going to approach budget issues equitably, if the business community doesn't trust that we're truly in a financial issue or a crisis now, we're not going to tackle any of the issues that I know are problems facing our school system today. That's why I say, even before we balance the budget and how we handle our financial issues, we've gotta tackle the credibility issue before we try and hire a superintendent that the community is going to trust and not believe that it's somebody that we founded targeted to carry out the agenda of some prior administration. We've gotta tackle and address that issue. How do you do that? It's the little things. You make it an open and fair process for everybody in the community and all the stakeholders and that's really how we'll approach it. Once you've established the credibility, it's quite simple. Then you apply the same process to the same issues, whether it's budget or hiring superintendent. You get your stakeholders invested, you make them knowledgeable, and then they become our advocates to push change in the community and that's the process that I'll stick to. My kids are started in the system and I...
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Eppertts? And thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Yeah, so I thank the candidates for your time and commitment to the support and cause. Great dialogue today. Let's give them a big round of applause. Again, a final thank you to the two Rotary Clubs for putting this on, the Chamber of Commerce, KFO, and of course, Jeffrey doing a great job as moderator and the People's Press for covering this event. And as you mentioned, we've got three more of these things coming up, so hopefully we'll see you next week at city council and mayor, then we'll have senate races and state rep, and then finally county commissioners. So thank you for your time. Have a good night.